All right, may I have a record reflect that I have a fonte or any of those?
No, I'm sorry.
You were... Yes.
Monday.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Peters. Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
And Sir Radick.
Yes.
To check this during the second session.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that no action is taken. At this time, I can call an order to the council meeting Monday, August 22nd, 2016, 7:05 PM. We have a little prayer mark if I really did it. Sure. May I have a prayer like the tears in prayer? Lord, put our feet on humble ground. If we begin our discussion making session, remind us that we are all your children. Help us define our values and formulate our decisions. Help us to understand our neighbors and our community. Help us to create a strong and healthy community. Give each person clarity of mind, courage, creativity, compassion, integrity, and a sense of humor. Give us listening ears without the words. Give us presence of mind and open heart. God's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, please help roll. Here.
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 And may the motion excuse member so moved. Second.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Sir Radick.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
To check this, please, as wonderful.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will turn it over to Mayor Els.
Yes. Jamie, if you don't mind standing up here. Jamie, would please, sir, we had a reservation from our planning commission a couple of weeks ago, and that was Gary Frye. Gary was a community planner. Gary lives in North Canton, and he was actually interested in applying for the position for Eric's position, Eric Bowles' position. And Gary has a lot of experience in community planning and also in economic development, and he's an attorney. And in order for him to be considered for that, we wanted to make sure that there was no conflict, so we asked that he resign from the planning commission. As a result, that opens up a vacancy, and we had to put somebody in the important position of the planning commission. And the planning commission, any of you that have been at a planning commission meeting, you know that it's a very, very big responsibility, because really what the planning commission does is whenever there is any sort of construction or site planning within the city, it has to go and be submitted and reviewed by the planning commission. So it's a real important position. Sometimes, a lot of people would consider it to be a bankless position, because there's a lot of conflict. You'll have a developer that wants to put in a new structure or new parking lot, they want to make an expansion, and there's certain requirements that they have to meet. And the planning commission, those are the individuals that make the final determination. And I had gotten a call from Jamie when you heard that there was a vacancy on it, and this dates back a number of years, because you had always said whenever there was an opportunity to serve the community, you'd be interested in doing that. And so Jamie's first opportunity to serve in North Canton was on the community survey committee, where she put together a nice presentation, did an excellent job, and you've served on that for a number of surveys. And then also, more importantly, the JCs. And anyone that is familiar with the JCs knows that they do a lot in the community, and particularly the JC fair. When I just look at it from the parade standpoint, the parade in and of itself is an organizational... I don't want to say nightmare, but I'm not going to say nightmare, yeah, organized chaos. But when you go there, you see that there's a big responsibility, a lot of organization goes into just putting the parade together, let alone when you look at the JC fair. And so we also need somebody that cares about the community, has a desire to serve, and you have to be attention to detail. You've got to be able to pay attention to detail, and you've got to be able to look at site maps, and you've got to be able to look at code. And so one of the reasons that I know that I made a good decision in appointing you, Jamie, to the position, is that you asked me, after I said, "Let's do this," and this was for you, you asked for a copy of the zoning code, because you wanted to read it over the weekend. When you have somebody that wants to read zoning code over the weekend, that is impressive. Okay? And so you're going to be able to read through that a lot. But we're glad to have you on board. And Jamie is... well, you're right. Katie is, and your daughters, you have Haley and your son Jack. Yep. And first grade, or...
First grade for Haley tomorrow, and preschool for Jackie. And then Big David Martin.
So I say David, wow, the house of the emperor that...
Yeah.
That's your great work. And Jamie also serves as a pharmaceutical representative.
Right, pharmaceutical company.
Yeah, so he works for a big company, and a very good question for a company, and he did an excellent job here. We're glad to have you. And the first item on the planning commission agenda is Walsh University. They're looking to add a $5 million plus facility, and they already came one time to the planning commission, didn't meet all the requirements, so now it's going to be the second time through. So you'll be on board. Okay? Glad to have you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. And before I move on, I want to be remiss if I didn't mention, this is our first meeting ever, and we are live streaming council meeting. We'll be doing that every Monday. Right up there is the camera. We've tested it out, high resolution, the lock, and what I understand, everything's going to sound just like you're in this room, so you can actually watch from home. The link is on the SIG webpage, the very bottom, I believe, it's a YouTube link. If you click on that, it takes you right to it. So we're all TV stars.
That's recorded, you have to report.
Yeah, it's got, yeah, it's got the report.
That's great, that's nice.
And also, I want to welcome this woman, Finance Director, for the council meeting. Welcome. Okay, moving on, for your consideration, having motion and a second to approve as presented. The council meeting minutes, July 11th, 2016. Mayor's Court receipts for June and July, 2016. New liquor license to Vita Bella LLC, 1664 North Main Street, Suites 13 and 14, North Canton. New liquor license to Giant Eagle LLC, or Giant Ohio, I'm sorry, LLC, doing business as Giant 446, at 1406 Main Street North, North Canton. And also a transfer of liquor license from Main Street Grill LLC, doing business as Main Street Grill, on 23 South Main, first floor basement and patio. Pots Mill Corporation, doing business as Main Street Grills, at the same address. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Sir Radick.
Yes.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
And Sir Radick.
Yes.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome the North Canton Elks Club. They are here to present a check to the City and the Police Department for the purchase of traffic safety vests for police officers. Welcome them.
How about we have, if you don't mind, just introduce yourself to the council and folks there.
My name's Tom Jones. I'm the head trustee. This is John Longmire, our treasurer, and Judge Zernicle, one of the trustees. On behalf of the vast North Canton Elks, we're presenting a check of $750 to the North Canton Police Department for safety vests, covering most of the expense for the new vest.
Right here, safety vest.
Nice.
Very nice.
Actually, every officer will have one of those.
Well, certainly, on behalf of the North Canton Police Department, I want to thank you for your outreach. We have several organizations in our community that support us, not only the lines, the JCs, but the Elks have been supporting our programs, especially in our schools, as far back as in 1992. And this is another form of their outreach. They came in the right time, as we had a hodgepodge of safety vests. And we were trying to update things, and Bill Colfax reached out to us, and they had this amount of money available for us, and this afforded us to at least get every officer and some of our new hire a new vest. They'll have it with them at all times, so that when they're out directing traffic, or investigating a crash, or crossing children, or just working outside of the street, will be what we're going to identify. I can't thank you enough for your outreach and your continued support from the City of North Canton, along with the Police Department. Are you going to need a receipt for this?
No.
Okay, just knowing that they have, all of us has a document. Well done, thank you very much. And I'm going to make this official act right to Mr. Brown, okay, our Director of Finance. So it's going straight from my hands, right to our Director of Finance. But gentlemen, thank you so much for what the Elks do and your support for the North Canton Police Department, Department of Justice. Thank you enough, thank you so much.
And you know, when you think about the Elks, my gosh, it started back giving out the watches.
Yes.
You know, to the, to the Derek.
Derek program.
Yeah, the Derek program, yeah, the drug Derek program. And so the Elks have always been such great workers in the city of North Canton. So we are really, really excited about this. And, you know, all the work and all the time and money that you donate to the city, greatly, greatly appreciated. And Mr. Jones, please go back and thank all the rest of the Elks.
I will.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Okay, at this time, wish you a dress counsel, please step forward, state your name and address. For everyone here and the folks at home.
Good evening. Melanie J. Wall, 30th Ray Orchestra. During the past several weeks, 11 citizens have been securing signatures on petitions concerning property tax exemptions granted by the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council on new construction in North Canton. This was an exercise in educating North Canton citizens, as most folks are unfamiliar with the Housing Council, or that property tax exemptions can be granted. I would like to read for the public record the language of the petition. Mayor David Els, we request in a hall meeting of the North Canton Housing Council by September 1, 2016, please include on the meeting agenda the following. One, rescind the tax abatements on North Bridge Place LTP, 1302 North Main Street, and Derrick and Terra Ray, 331 Hard Street Northwest. Number two, recover all taxes or bond on these properties. These two abatements are on new construction and not in compliance with North Canton ordinance 107.09. Amount of taxes not paid by the owners over the dated term, North Bridge, $886,937, Hardman Street, $30,660. Abated taxes means lost revenue for North Canton schools, city EMS, fire, police, and street improvements. Conclusion of petition. And what I would say is, folks are angry, angry of a few not wanting to pay their share of property taxes. 178 North Canton citizens signed this petition. Seven are former North Canton Council members. All of these citizens are in favor of tax abatements for improvements to existing homes, but not in favor of abatements for new construction. Darryl Regal has stated earlier this summer in public speaks, current North Canton ordinances prohibit new residential construction from receiving CRA tax abatements. They are invalid. Could this be the reason Ordinance 16 is on the agenda this evening? Your intent being to craft legislation to include new residential construction? Mayor Els, we ask you to take immediate action. Schedule a meeting of the Housing Council, that is within your curfew, I believe. Miriam and I will be presenting copies of this petition to the next scheduled school board meeting, to Superintendent Wendell and President Hunt. As nearly two-thirds of each of our property caps goes to North Canton schools, how can you continue the past legislation, which ultimately will be a reduction of needed revenue to the school debt? People cannot understand why we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
President Peters.
President, may I have a to present a comment on this, or do we have another time?
Do what? Are there any more? Let's do it at the end of our orders.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else wish you to address counsel, not just on this matter, but any other matter?
My name is Rod Cuddy of 35 Upper Avenue, South East. The A.C. Nielsen Company has been known as a company for seven years to be majoring TV audiences to see how people react to their instructions. That company has been very successful, but majoring 230,000 people with only 1,100 interviews. I decided to interview 25 of the place where I happen to live, of 83 condos called Auburn Ghos, down on South Main Street. And then I shared with them, with 25 persons, information on this rebate issue, on the tax abatements of the North Canton departments and the apartment area of the homes. I planned to interview all 83, but as a career professional and marketing researcher, which I have been for 65 years, I felt the conclusion was valid, genuine, ideal. Those are the two terms that research people call themselves, is valid and a different value, I feel it is. In a word, these residents were vehement, not believing this should even happen, believe it happened. Value of the particular condo units down there in 83 is $34 million. Owners pay annual property taxes of $332,000, and $180,000, roughly 6% of the total taxes go to the schools. And many feel they face another school debt. North Canton schools is having some financial problems, not serious enough that you sweep over, but they are problems that they won't be solved as they always have been, as I agree with school system. The Auburn Ghos developer, for example, in 1982, government was constantly a people in Ohio, who still runs a development company for condo units and major shopping centers in the nation. Anyway, he paid $2.1 million for the land, 35 acres, and asked for no tax abatements. These North Canton residents virtually asked for abatements for rescinding immediately. Repeating a repository headline, thanks, Mr. Hopebrook, and your superiors, the repository headline of a strong editorial 18 months ago on insurance aid, quote, to headline, full-length headline, North Canton residents are madder than hell, and I think they still are, as Melanie said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuk Osborn, 307 Berry Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. North Canton's CRA program came into existence with ordinance 2299 back in March of 1999. It was implemented for a good purpose, a logical purpose, to encourage people to fix up older housing stock here in the city. It would abate the increased value of the property after the improvements. Our wife and I took part of that in 2005, and it's just now running out. We had a 10-year commitment. We put $150,000 in an old house, and it's still an old house. But the house had been purchased by her parents in 1946. My wife had grown up there most of her life, and we were going to live there until we died. It sits on a very undesirable lot. They're very small lots. And that's what this council should be doing. It needs to totally revamp the zoning code to do away with our 50 lots. There's no room for parking, there's no room for snow removal. You couldn't even fight a fire if you wanted to get on each, all sides of the house to fight a fire, because the houses are too close. It increased the value of our house by $28,000. And we, the latest reduction was $600. We continue to pay taxes on the basic original value of the house. I think there's been less than five people taking advantage of that in 17 years. And as I spoke to you back in April, I think that indicates this program is a failure. Nobody is going to do that. We had personal reasons, or we had goals set aside for ourselves. And I'm sure that the one or two others that did had the same thing. The incentive has nothing to do with whether to make an investment or not, absolutely nothing. You are turning this program into a program for wealthy and multimillionaires. And if you stop to think, you're undermining your original purpose for developing, or creating the program. Why would anybody come to North Canton and buy an old house and fix it up when they're only going to get a few hundred dollars a year savings in taxes, when you can buy a empty lot here in North Canton and get 100% of the taxes abated for 15 years? We only got 10 years. And I'm not complaining. We didn't need it at all. But when you're handing out money, all of us will have our hands in it. Now, Mr. Lemon built a 40-unit apartment complex on North Main. It's invested property. I don't care if it's residential or not, it's invested property. The rents build in the fact that you're going to have to pay property taxes. But since you've abated all the taxes on that, in violation of your ordinance, he's getting windfall profits. You're undermining the entire purpose of it, beginning this program, because people aren't stupid. They're going to say, "Well, hell, I'll build my house and have my taxes abated for the entire time my kids are in school, and not ever contributing to the schools, not ever contributing to the streets that they drag the schools on. The police will buy all of that." Your housing committee is a joke. Who's on the housing committee? Two members appointed by the mayor, two members appointed by council, one member appointed by the planning commission, and two city residents appointed by a majority of the first five. The very people that are creating this certainly aren't going to second guess it when it comes up for review. And again, they're also intending to let the Director of Permits and Resection make these decisions behind closed doors in the dark of night. Millions of dollars you're giving away, and yet there's no reason to. As I told you again in previous speech, a drugstore built, never that dilapidated mobile home park, O'Reilly's built, there's building all over this city. You're giving away money to multimillionaires. And I was shocked when Mrs. Keats had admitted that she was having ongoing conversations with Mr. Dehaw, and he was giving her incentives to tow back to council, to speed passage of the airway. This legislation that you've down there, which is just tonight, you're simply trying to cover your butt.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Because of the lawsuit that I threatened, because you know you're wrong. Those abatements violated.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Orders. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Catherine Schmal, editor of my last year with the Bachelor in the Southwest. I would like to say I am appalled you are here again and guarding this issue. As previously stated at the last meeting, the abatement is illegal according to your own zoning laws. How many of you on this board have accepted campaign donations from DEHAW? Those of you who have should recuse yourselves. I also would like to say the abatement would only help DEHAW, not owe the city. And furthermore, all neighbors have been discussing the fact that if and when a school levy or bond at any time comes up for election, we shall vote against it every time, because the money should be going to the schools, not to an abatement. Wake up, DEHAW.
Thank you.
Miriam, office frequency for whoever asked in North Canton. I took the other signatures, total petition. People at first were disbelieving when I told them, "Oh, I'm proposing the petition." And then they did get angry. Nobody is against rehabilitation, but nobody likes the idea of new construction. I gave out a packet with concerns with ordinance number 16. The first page is our charter, section 2.05, paragraph 3, specifies the subject shall be clearly specified in its title. The title for Ordinance 16 repeals Ordinances 510 and 107, Deschel 9. The title does not address reducing and dividing these two ordinances into the current 16 ordinance. Turn the page, and you can see what I'm talking about. The reducing and dividing these two ordinances is addressed as section, not in the title, which is a violation of our charter. If you read the title, it just says you're repealing it. It said nothing else. Okay, turn the page. Section 2 states exhibit date is attached. There is no exhibit date, which would be the map and the values of the CRA. That is not holding on to this government to not have that exhibit available. Section 5, the same page, specifies the application must be filed six months after completion unless the housing officer extends the time. Please delete the time extension, which creates gray area. Someone could apply years after the fact, because the time is not specified. Our ordinances can be more stringent than state law. Doing away with that time extension would be more stringent. Okay, turn the page. Section 7, specifies the housing director is authorized to grant real property tax exemptions, changed into also approval or notification to council in a public meeting in the spirit of open and honest government. If the housing director is the one to give a hop, then nobody ever knows what they are. Turn the page. This is a natural problem that tax people put in the county out there showing the yearly tax of not paid and the loss to fire, DMS, roads, and schools. and the loss to fire arenas, roads, and schools. The schools are the biggest losers, for over $10,000 during the course of the late on this new construction. The school superintendent, the school board, the teachers' union are not happy about the loss of school funding. School approval should be part of the ordinance. In fact, there have been a couple of residents that have gone to talk to the superintendent, what's it mean? And it was brought up that the council says, "Oh, well, you are getting tax of the land", though I heard the superintendent actually laugh. You know, "Sure, you're getting tax of the land, what is it on that page, what, $7,000 a year? What aren't you getting? Forty-seven thousand a year." And finally, how can we have a second reading tonight for ordinance 4916? amended in chapter 1133 of the zoning code. The zoning ordinance 111.04 specifies all amendments must go to the planning commission and have public hearings. And I don't think that has happened, and you're really casting new amendments. And education, our community code, I'm almost giving.
Good evening, I'm Jesse, 1005 Willamette, South Carolina. I'm sorry to say that. Last meeting of us at council, I was under the impression that due to some speakers who are very familiar with the law, which I am not, that the council action on this taxation was illegal. I was also under the impression that the city council stated that the North Canton School Board stated they were fixed, they'd be tax abated because they're not whose tax money. And lastly, I think most, I won't say most, a lot of citizens of North Canton are not happy with what's going on with this tax abatement. But the school board comes up with a bloody, this fault, I don't know if they are and there's going to be a lot of people who vote against it, because they have a lot of negative votes. I am not going to have my school taxes raised for other people to enjoy no taxes whatsoever, and I have to pay for their education. This is just a common sense situation. I don't know why the people keep on pushing this. Right after the meeting I attended, when he said this was very, the very next day I was told, "Oh, no, it's going to come. They're going to try to push this across whatever you have to do." Word on the streets is that this council is being controlled by a few people in this town, and these people are very, very, very upset these tax incentives were not passed and they wanted a pass. You represent the citizens of North Canton, you gotta do the right things. This is taxation without representation. No one wants this, that I'm aware of, that I ever talked to, it's a ridiculous proposal, absolutely ridiculous. How you can tax some people and not tax others? There was wars fought over taxation. I'm sorry to be gruff with you, but I have to be, for a simple reason. You've got your minds made up, you don't listen to the citizens of North Canton. We don't want it, it's no good, it's a terrible, I mean it, it's a terrible situation. Why don't you go on with your business like you should be doing, you're just running the city, and just get rid of this damn thing, because it's not going to go away as far as we're concerned. It's just a, it's just a, I don't know, I don't want to get by picking, I just, how do you be bothered, I don't know what to say. I was here last night, I gave you guys a lot of information on, I saw things that could be done in North Canton. I asked for someone to get ahold of me and give you some feedback on that information, if there was any good ideas, no one kind of picked me. And of course, I didn't expect it, I'll tell you. And I didn't expect it because of crap like this, because this is what you worry about. If you're so diehard on appealing, give people who patrol this town what they want, then the only thing I can tell you to do, you should all resign, get off the board, let some new people get in here who don't have any ties with these other people who run the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council? Mr. Jesse, I think you made me a little confused.
I think a lot of people are confused.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about.
I think we need to
Yeah, I think everybody is confused as to what is going on here.
Yeah.
We are repealing the most recent CRA and falling back, put in ordinance form, falling back on the ordinances that were approved in 2000 and 2004. There is no new CRA areas we're adding on. Mr. Jesse, you understand what I'm saying? Good night, and listen.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse.
You see, that's frustrating, because, you know, we
You're frustrated.
We have people come up alleging a lot of things here. We're going to set the record straight. It's been alleged here that we're bought and paid for by developers. It's just absolutely ludicrous, it's ridiculous. I'm personally appalled and offended. Most of you know me, for a long time. What we're going to be talking about in the committee meeting following this council meeting regarding the CRA is not expanding, not expanding CRA, we're falling back to what was passed in 2000 and 2004. That's exactly what this is. This is not an expansion of CRA. It's repealing the most recent one, which is in Ohio. To make it consistent with what we have as far as certifications on those, that's it, nothing new. It's the value view, the original value view CRA in the main street corridor, that is it. But to most of you that have come up and spoken against us, were in favor of that. You didn't, I'm sure you didn't tell people that when you passed the petition, right? You know, and it's frustrating, you know, and Mr. Jesse, I loved it. But he was completely wrong, he wouldn't even stick around to listen. Wouldn't even stick around to listen. It's frustrating. Mary, do you have something to add?
Yeah, Tom, you know, just to give everybody an update on what we're having with the CRA. When this was first brought to our attention that the CRA was approved, I mean, anybody who looks at this, any of the council members, myself, my first look at this is that, of course not, or not, why did we approve the tax abatement for an apartment complex of 39 units? It's not anything that I've recorded since I started as administrator, it's not anything that I've supported 11 years ago since I started as mayor. When you look at, just to make it feel simple, there are some taxes that we give back, you know, for example, like the Hoover Company. We lost 23% of our income, so we want to bring businesses to the city of North Canton, how do we do that? Well, we will offer a tax incentive, so we'll say to a company, "If you come and you bring your 200 workers, they will pay the income tax, and then when after the city collects it, we'll give it back to the company in the form of a grant." So some might call that a tax abatement, or a grant. And the good thing is, is that we collect the money and then we give some back. But we do that so that they come and we have the jobs here, hopefully they stay for 10, 20 years into the future. So all the work that we did with the Hoover Company has worked out very well. Because the money that we invested, which was probably in tax dollars and incentives, was probably like over $300,000. But now we're getting every year at least $400,000, $350,000, $400,000. So you can see that the tax incentives can be very positive. Now, when you look at an apartment complex, such as the one that was abated here, that is something personally that I would never support. And we look at it and say, "Well, okay, then how can this happen?" And really, just to kind of take the whole process and try to simplify it, what happens is that there are tax abatements, and we say, "Okay", most of that money that's collected at tax abatement or property tax, it goes mainly to the schools. So if we're going to give a tax abatement over a 10-year period, I believe it's 10 years of over $800,000 that the schools would have to give up, you would say you would have to give the schools permission, correct? And in this case, that didn't happen. Why didn't it happen? So we go to our law director, go to the administrator, go to the law director and say, "We want to find out, I want to find out, council wants to find out, how this tax abatement can be given if it never came before council and it never came before the school board? I'd really like to know." So we had our law director go in there and then also make sure that we're doing things properly, and that there's no appearance of impropriety because decisions that we're making here as elected officials and as a law director, obviously there's, we're within the system here. So we also asked Chris Schmidt, who's from Bricker and Ackler, which is the leading law firm in this area down in Columbus, to also review the work that Tim Fox, our law director, is doing. And so we're not done with it yet, but what we found so far is that that decision lied with our economic development director. And what he's able to do, under his interpretation of the ordinance, was that if it's for a residential property, and that he could grant that tax abatement. Now, the intent, as our previous president of council, Darryl Waltz, who wrote the law, and I've talked to him in at least a dozen conversations over this, is that it was intended for residential properties that were not big apartment complexes, right? So then the question is, let's say that somebody buys a house, it should be done for a rental property. Well, how many units? Well, the ordinance that we have does not specify the number of units as far as what classifies as commercial or residential. And so the decision that was made by the law director, or not, I'm sorry, by our economic development director, was that, yes, this would qualify as residential, it's 39 units. Something I personally would never support, and my hunch is that our council members wouldn't be so excited about supporting something like that. Because why would you give away tax money to bring in apartment complexes? Because 40%, 40% on average of the residents of the city pay income tax. It could be because they work in another city, so they don't pay income tax. It could be because they're retired, so they're not going to pay income tax. So we're not really, we don't want to incentivize necessarily apartment complexes, we just, I personally don't, because it doesn't assure revenue is coming in. If any revenue comes in, it's going to be property tax. So where we're at right now is we are looking through every paper, every document, everything that was done on the CRA. You know, it's real clear that people are upset, because I'm upset. We have members of council that are upset, very upset, okay? And so we're going to make sure that everything was done properly. We want to know why it didn't go before this council, we want to know why it didn't go before the school board, so it is very upsetting. And I can assure everybody here that it's not some big conspiracy theory that somebody's controlling, like developers are controlling, these elected officials are, I mean, this is complete nonsense, nonsense. But, I can understand, from your perspective, it's like, "Well, how can somebody do this? Why would we even do something like this? This is like stupid." I agree. That's my opinion, that is my opinion. So what we're going to do is we have our law director, and he's reviewing it, and he also has one of the top attorneys in the state of Ohio that's also reviewing it. We're going to make sure that, clarify the process and what was done and why it was done, and we're going to get to the bottom of it. That's what we're going to do. And so I'm glad you folks submitted petitions, but I can assure you that everything is being done above board, and we're going to make sure that it's done above board for our council and myself, and our law director and our administrator, and Eric Bowles, our economic development director. He's done a great job serving the city, but also Friday is his last day because he retired. And so we want to make sure we have a proper and very thorough review of these CRAs, and I can assure you that there is just no, I mean, Ron said, common sense. Well, there's no, defies common sense to give a property tax abatement on a piece of, on an apartment complex when we know that less than 40% on average are going to be paying income tax. Why wouldn't we give up the property tax? Why would we do that? That's what our council members are asking, that's what I'm asking. We don't think that anything at all was done due to impropriety at all. One thing that I know so far is that when you look at interpreting a policy, that you can oftentimes, and I see this, where you can interpret it in a number of different ways. You can have two people looking at the same situation, and I want everyone to be real clear, that I have with Eric Bowles, he has a great deal of integrity, he served the city very well, and I consider him a, not only an excellent employee, but a personal friend. And so there is, there is no mal-intent on his behalf at all, not at all. There is no improprieties done by any of our, by our city administrator, by our law director, by our council at all, I can assure you of that. But we're going to make sure that we're able to demonstrate that to all of you. And so not just Mr. Fox, but also Chris Schmidt from Bricker and Ackler, we're going to get to the bottom of it, and we're going to find out why this went through, but I can tell you, it really comes down to policies. Mary, as you come up and you start reading the Ohio advice code or policies, Melanie, Ron, I mean, you're exactly right, but that's why we have attorneys to read this stuff and interpret it, and to make sure that we're all doing what we're supposed to do. So that's my opinion, that's what we're going to be doing, is having a very thorough review, but I can assure you that there is nobody up here that is being controlled by anyone or, or, there's just no incentive. There's no incentive for anyone to take away money from the schools, so everyone here supports the schools. So we're going to find out, and Mr. Fox is going to have a very, very thorough review right now, and it's being, the oversight is also being given by Chris Schmidt, as far as the opinion, the information that he's looking at. And so I do appreciate all of his patience, and this petition is well noted, and to all of you that circulated it, your message is loud and clear. And we appreciate the time you took to put this together, that's all I have.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council, please step forward, say your name, I ask.
Linda Hoblon, 850 Eastern Street, Southeast. I wasn't playing, I was speaking. We need, evidently, someone needs to make the point that they are adding new construction to existing CRA areas that currently only allow abatement on existing structures. When you put apartments up, who's going to call the EMS here from the Gothenburg? So I guess we need to have that money to do that. I mean, the schools, trust me, they can fight for themselves. They have plenty of attorneys and stuff. But think what you're doing to the residents and your police and fire, if that's what you need, it depends on them, and they're excellent. So let's not cut them short of the money that's owed to them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Larry Trigg, one one two seven, Ms. Maple. Thank you, Mayor, for your input. I have just one little problem understanding. You were talking about tax incentives versus tax abatements. The tax incentives, are they coming from grant running? You were talking about grants for the tax incentives. So if that's the case, the tax abatement gets home, it hits my pocketbook. The, from grants, doesn't really hit home as quick. Now, back in the first of June, I made just a very easy suggestion for a tax incentive for people to paint their houses, put new ross on, and put new siding on. I don't know if you remembered that. That was, what, two, three months ago? Has anything been done, or was that just, you know, another wish list of my thinking? It means nothing to me because I'm retired, so I don't pay any income tax. But if you want to have a nice looking city, get people to paint their houses, put new ross on, new siding. The tax abatement doesn't do anything in that area. So we're going to tax credit, if you would. That's all I ask for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Actually, the grants, Mayor was referencing earlier, for example, the cranes, that was your tax money, that hit you directly. It came out of CIC, that's your direct tax dollar. Anyone else wish to address counsel? Please state your name, address. All right, seen none. We will move on to the business. We have a motion and a second read by Title Only, the second reading of ordinance number forty-seven dash sixteen. So, Mayor.
Yes.
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 Six seven by Title Only, the second reading of ordinance number forty-seven thousand sixteen, and ordinance altering location of Fortuna Bridge Street Northeast and Whuppers Street Northeast located within the parking lot of the city of North Canton.
Okay, that's Chair McKeesling, she's not here. Second reading, we've talked about this, it's been reviewed by the plating commission, agreed to by the adjoining property owners. If no one else has any further comment, entertaining motion, would you approve the second? Second.
You need a motion?
Well, I'll move with that.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
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 Six seven to adopt the second reading of ordinance number forty-seven thousand sixteen.
Thank you very much. I may have a motion and a second read by Title Only, the second reading of ordinance number forty-nine dash six. So, second.
Coles?
Yes.
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 Six seven by Title Only, the second reading of ordinance number forty-nine thousand sixteen, and ordinance altering Chapter one one three three, Single Family Chief Annual Residential District Regulations for the Cardified Ordinances of the City of North Canton, specifically Section one one three three and zero three, C N three, additional regulations for logic, park areas, driveways, and vehicles.
Thank you, Chair, and where?
So we talked about this before when I'm writing, and this came up because the situation where we could back up the road going over, the way we make certain recommendations, if issues arose, we could make changes, or kind of just talk about that on how it's, and the limitations that there are because of the blocks, and so that's what this is.
One question, very proud of, asks our law director to review, let me know if you're on board, she's wanting to know what this story is. I think that's what she missed, I'm surprised.
The issue was the plating commission, your requirement, right now, this is the second reading, your third reading, and I think it misses it. So in between the second and third readings, either the first or the second is when you should send that to the plating commission, ask for the plating commission's reliance on that, if a recommendation comes back, if they're integrated, if they're enacted on the thirds, it's just you need to do that before you can act.
Okay, so it'll be on the agenda for the next plating. We won't, we won't catch the third read until they're reviewing, gives a recommendation?
Right, it should, it should come for a third.
Okay, yeah. And whatever that law, public area or not, then it's going to be okay.
I think the reason we did that, you know, we have her in the council chamber, and we promised we'd get the ball.
Ohio Chamber.
And there was a situation, I believe, we should have the contractor there.
Yes, I was at the house, I was seeing it specifically, and it's something we wanted to help alleviate those front yard situations that have no other opportunity to back down on a major street that's very busy. So I think we're going in the right directions on, you know, there's some way we need to comply with other amendment ordinances, I think we should continue to do that also in the process.
Okay, so, questions were made, just making sure we're on the right track.
May I?
No, I'm sorry, there was another item.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, with that, reports?
I'd like to say, welcome back, everybody. Nice to see all these smile faces, and it's nice to see everybody here in the audience. And I see a voice guy here for citizenship in the community, or citizenship in the, right, the community.
Amy.
Not a boy. So awesome. So anyhow, thanks for the way this spoke. The only thing that's been on my mind is I went through the Main Street Festival, which was well attended, we had a great break in the weather, the mayor got dunked a couple times by me, don't hold that against me. But, you know, I did get a lot of comments from different people about the Hoover project. So I'm just going to throw this out again, I think we need to have some communication with my notes, you know, threads on it. Let's see, I'm going to have to see if we can get the yard cleaned up, and at least have the outside parents look like something's happening. I know economics always playing into it, and the hogging and all these other projects, but we need to get some out there to give us an update, and also see if we can do the outside, you know, falls coming, let's get some trees planted, let's get the rough base in if we could, and just clean it and make it look nice. That's the main part of the town, that's our square. And it just looks so nice now that they cleaned up, or at least have a program, I'm a little rapt, because I think people are asking, anyone to know?
Well, you can preach as you want. We've been after that for some time. Thank you. Where?
Laura, it's nice to see you, I saw you go live. Good to have you. I had a meeting for East Flood, they had their infrastructure meeting, and I went to that, and it was pretty well attended, and kind of the same things that came up, because they want to know what's going on with the company. We've had some test boards in the board, we're working on, there wasn't that address. I did get in touch with Jim Fines, they have a creek issue, it's going to continue to flood. And it was not just working with the P M, it's working with the, you know, for many years, and human, and they're kind of involved in that, and it's not as easy as just, come in the backhoe, remove some of that, still the same. So it's a lot, it was really nice to be able to come together and talk about it. It was civil, it was back and forth, it was people could ask questions, and then it was fine. But I think it was that nice communication, like we tried to do, Jeff and awards, and very nice meeting, and we get a lot of information available, and they get questions answered, not by hearsay, but it was really helpful, and I appreciate these words today. Oh, they're saying about the newsletter page. And Main Street was, I think, really a success as well, and it was just so nice to see what they're so deep talking about. I think I have to, I don't know.
Pretty nice. Carter?
I would just basically echo what folks have said already, to thank, special thanks to the Chamber for a great festival, it's one of the things we highlight as a community and faculty work, we would be done so special thanks to them. A special thanks to Eric for his great work in retirement. A special welcome to Laura, I try not to bother her too much, which I'm sure she appreciates. I don't want to steal her thunder, but it's been a fun place to visit, which are all just the various community committees that have flowed in from other departments, because they know it's going to be budget time. On last year, so a special welcome to her. She sent the grounds, her shirts on, we're glad to have her.
Good luck. Just the same kind of things, here at Main Street was terrific. Walking around there, people would come, you'd say, this is really cool to have this community and have this type of things in the community, so. Also, when we were going with the Seven Twenty, that was very successful over there, and the library had a nice program at the parks, and movies and so on, so we had some really good things over this past summer. Wyans Hill Pool, just a couple things, you know, they've had a very successful year, you know, got started three weeks later. But there are going to be some issues that we're going to take care of, and the contractors are going to take care of, and talk to the mayor about that, with the grass and some of the runoff of the water, so there will be some things that we're going to be needing to do in conjunction with the water. Garchak, we met with the Heritage Society, which was Tim and Mike Ramsey and myself, and those folks. They did get a grant to put some things into that. Steve Kuhn, I talked to him today, he will do the work to refurbish the rest of it, and the Heritage Society is actually going to pay him a little bit, this time he's actually going to get paid for something. Some of the things there, like the air conditioner that sticks out the side, we don't want to get it, and they're cut out of that, so that's going to be removed. A lot of stuff's going to stay the same on the inside, though, but the things like the gutters there, they need straightened out, and some panies and so on, so Kuhn Restoration is going to take care of that. Also, the University District is underway, and you can see the new crosswalks out there. Jim, thank you for getting that going, it's just a beginning stage of what we're going to see out there. Even though the removal of the pillars was not as successful as I would like them to be, we'll work through that. I do want to get a date on what our roads, when we're going to get refurbished, we're not, I think Doug will probably mention something there. Hoover District, I did make contact with Carol Smith, she gave me a couple days since September, but she will come here and at least make some updates. But that's all, that's all we get, best we can do. And that's it, no other report. Thank you. Do you have a question? Yes, Jim, can you give us a road update as far as paving? You know, right now, I think we might get started.
They started with the catch basins, and they'll be replacing some of the curbing, if that's left, they're moving mass for resurfacing. There are some areas, the number of roads that we do have resurfacing issues, probably have two mobilizations, there are some that they can move in, and here in the near future, start paving those. Without areas that don't need catch basins and curbing, so I expect that shortly, but I don't have, I don't have exactly.
We anticipate, you have the amount of less to finish before it's finalized?
We do. We still have some from last year that didn't get completed.
Okay, I just think we need to continue to work towards that, and as just earlier, having contractors start earlier with heat and ventilation.
Yeah, well, this is right.
I'm not saying it's late with our city engineering, it's a, it's a very confusing situation sometimes, getting equipment mobilized, when you're dealing with contractors and jobs, if they run late somewhere else, they're going to come to your city late, it's just, you know, not an excuse, it's kind of the reality of business, or contractors who do this, but anything we can do in the future is to get out front, that I think we'll be able to arrest this versus turn it in October or early November for stuff like, we just get better jobs too. So we made this, our school starts, we're going to run the school, that's what I'm saying. Right. Updating the pool as far as hours and how long they continue to be open, do we know for sure what that is?
They're going to lay for days.
Okay, so they'll be open this weekend, and then the following weekend, we're saying, they close right after later day?
Yes, sir. It's last day.
Okay.
And the afternoons, in the week time, or something?
Yeah, afternoons, I'll make it a little bit there.
Yeah, it's a little bit, yeah. On various civic days too, much school starts. We're going to meet with that, that, at that point, see how we're going to continue maybe better. We have to remain managed to hopefully. The numbers are very good, but it's hot summer. We're going to get started later. We got some takes to clean up over there.
Do you have a question, regards to catch basins? The contractor we have does installation, the curbing, and any repairs to the sidewalk, correct? And then we come and do the asphalt around it out on the street, is that, who does the asphalt?
Well, you might be talking about a couple different programs. The street department, they have a program where they're replacing catch bases, independent of the street resurfacing program. So they have a budget, I think they're replacing sixty to eighty catch bases this year, like ones over on Harmon and Hart Circle. That was a street department project. So when that came to me, I wasn't aware of what was happening, I went out and checked with the guys, and they found out what was happening on the project. So my understanding is some of that work, contractor will do, so the city might do, I believe, these particular catch bases, the city will do the asphalt, or contractor took the concrete.
So Harmon?
At Harmon, right.
That's for today.
By the way, you're right. And we need to talk the money back. Who we have here at five o'clock in the morning, the old folks in the parades, and the sidewalk. Now, when we do a street project, contractor does everything.
I'll just share some. All right, very good. Director Wong, how cover the CRA portion, when we get to that in the committee meetings, so double up on that, and then later we need to, if there's a comment for that, instructions? Director Finance?
Thank you. Just want to thank everybody for the warm welcome so far, and note that I've got to visit a lot of the city departments and facilities. Everyone's been very welcoming and was very dedicated to the job site, so that's been nice to see. Once I have a chance to dig into more financial information, I'll of course be providing you with reports. If there's anything that anyone on council would like to see as far as financial reports, please let me know, and I'll try to accommodate that as best I can.
Hey, welcome. Director, let's finish.
The catch bases, we also have another little program where we do hire some of that out too, to get specific ones, because we were having so many issues, so we've got a third wave of tax monies too, depending on how much money they have, so.
I think that's one of the, have the offer actually, this one is one of ours.
Are we doing the asphalt on that, or are they doing the whole thing? Yeah, I think you still do the asphalt, maybe the four minutes and that, so.
We've got the wrong.
I must just go over, and I did asphalt today, Harmon did, but I, yeah. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, first off, the Hoover District, Councilman Bate brought up how people were looking at the front lawn there, or the parking lots to go, and it's not looking good, as far as, you know, the parking lot's not done yet, and so, actually that very day, on Saturday, I called the owner of the Hoover District, Stuart Licker, on his home in California, spoke with him on cell phone. Mark Sorrelli also simultaneously, I think, even the same day or the day before, called administration to make sure that the Hoover District is doing what they're supposed to do, doing it in a timely manner and making sure that that is being done. So we're going to be meeting with them sometime in September to go over that, the status of the project. And historically, we've had, we've had a lot of toleration from them because, you know, we have over a thousand new jobs there in the Hoover District and we're bringing in over four hundred thousand dollars a year with the jobs alone over the Hoover District. To give you an idea how much that is, our income tax, we used to bring in seven million dollars. That was back to two thousand, the Hoover company left, we're down to five point four million. And it wasn't exclusively the income tax of the Hoover company, but twenty-three percent of that was. So now we're, so it's about a million dollars a year for Hoover District. So now we're about halfway, close to halfway back as far as bringing back jobs around the Hoover District City. So that's very, very profitable. And as far as CRA, I'm very pleased to see all of our residents that are on top of this because it's very, very troubling when, when you see the system and what took place with this particular CRA, because we're working really hard to bring in tax dollars. We do not want to see tax dollars going out in another form that certainly is not something that I or members of council approve of or, or the, or the school board approve of. And that's where we have a law director, the city administrator and our finance director. They are getting to the bottom of it. They are going to go through every document, every file, whatever they have to do to make sure that they have a thorough assessment of this so that we can make sure, number one, it doesn't happen in the future. And number two, that we, if there's any correction thing with this one or the apartment complex, that we do that. And with that, Eric Bowles, who has sort of the city very well over the years, he, his last day was a Friday. And I already have somebody that I would like to appoint to a position, Gary Frye, who was a community planner in two cities out in Utah. He lives in North Canton. He's a local attorney. He's very, very bright, has a lot of experience and we'd like to appoint him to the position of the development director that will be responsible for economic development, building permits. And it's a, it's a big, big job, a lot of responsibility and also zoning as well. And thank you to Dan Durbin for introducing me to all. So he will be a great asset to us. And then our finance director, I'm not sure that a lot of our residents are aware of what a Jim Lee have in our new finance director. Nora, she's a resident of North Canton, which is always a plus. We love, love to have people working here, live in our city, love our city as much as we do. But when you look at a lot of municipalities throughout the state of Ohio and also across the country, they're really, really struggling financially. It's been a big, big struggle at North Canton. In some communities, it gets so bad financially, they have to go into fiscal emergency. So it's really like a financial emergency. And, and so what does the state of Ohio do? They call in the A team. They call in the best people that they have to go in and actually provide oversight to those municipalities that are in a financial crisis. And they, the state of Ohio provides oversight to get them back on track. And Laura is actually the person that leads that A team in, in northeastern Ohio. So when you look at cities such as Maple Heights, Mansfield, the city of Massillon, it is more around her team that goes in there and comes up with methods and policies and procedures to get the city back on track. And most recently, Laura was providing oversight for the city of Massillon and they're really doing well. When you started working with them, they had like a, I don't know, a dollar or eighty? And now, who's they have left fund out, which is what?
General funds, state and state.
Yeah, much better. It's, they've got, they've got a lot of money, a lot more than they have, certainly than when you started. So when the council had asked for resumes, it was very apparent, I wasn't in on the interview process because the council selected Laura, but I would like to commend the council because, you know, you, you got the Ron James of the financial world here and we're really, really glad to have him here. And that is all I have. And here's our Michael Jordan of the city. Go ahead.
Yes. He's retired. Yeah. Baseball. I very grateful, thank you.
Director?
I just want to remind everyone that I will be presenting the resurfacing hand for the tourman on Thursday, September twenty-ninth at six p.m. at the City Center.
I'll call for this to council.
One question, when you do meet with Hoover, we already asked about the Hoover's ghost there.
Absolutely.
That was quoted, we started as soon as the weather.
Yes. They told me that in March.
I know that, I know.
What's that?
And we should hopefully get this done, you know, it's.
Okay. That concludes this agenda. Do I entertain any motion to adjourn?
So good.
Second, both say aye.
Aye.
Most say aye. We're calling for a special committee, the whole meeting Monday, August second, two thousand sixteen.
Question, Bobby. How bad you can tell?
That's a lot.
Another meeting, we tag them on the other.
Have a good evening.
All right.
Aye. Eight twenty-four p.m. Clerk, please call.
Here.
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 Here. Here. Any other motion, second, Tuesday, September eighteenth? Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. First up is committee on development. Lord Eric Fox, you take the lead on that?
Okay. The mayor has done a fine job. Council president as well has explained what this ordinance is intended to do, does not expand the current CRA area. And I'm not going to get into much detail of things that I have verified, quantified, validated, et cetera regarding the history of community reinvestment acts in the city of North Canton. But I, I think for those that, for valid reasons, trust and respect those that they worked with in the past. And if they're told something, oftentimes they take it as this has got to be true. There's no way this is not true because it's this person that's told me this. So it's got to be true. And from that, without verifying the brass, the, the statements, and in some instances, you've gone to great length to validate what this person has told you. And just a basic example of this is, this is the, the document that petitioned that was taken around and quite a number of residents have signed this petition. And I absolutely understand that this was a lot of work for so many individuals that brought this document around. And on the basis of someone else's comment, you've asked them to sign and asked to overturn legislation, you asked to invalidate tax abatements that have already been afforded to businesses and individual. And you asked, as part of the meeting agenda, for the mayor to demand that the housing council meet and you demanded that tax abatements be withdrawn for those that have received them. And you've done this on the statement that these abatements on new construction are not in compliance with North Canton ordinance one oh seven oh nine. Ordinance one oh seven oh nine was repealed less than a month later than, and replaced with ordinance five dash ten. So you've gone to all of this effort and stated the basis behind this is this person who I trust gave me this statement. I believe it's true and I'm going to tell everyone that it's invalid and I'm going to say that ordinance one oh seven oh nine is invalid and, well, it was repealed a month So in going through the history of CRAs in the city of North Canton and what we have the authority to issue tax abatements, there's a requirement that if this, any municipality wishes to apply for a community reinvestment act or area tax abatement, that you apply with the Department of Development in its Columbus office. There's a requirement, there's documents have to be there, you must have your survey, you must have your ordinance and whatnot that you must apply for and the state statute that we must follow, that we have no authority to override as a home rule municipality, that before you are permitted to issue the tax abatement, you must receive from this office, from this director, a certification and a special identifying number that authorizes you to issue tax abatements in accordance with that ordinance. So in trying to verify the community reinvestment areas that the city has applied for, has put packages and so forth together, I was only able to validate ordinances seventy-one oh four, that's the Valley View, community reinvestment area, and ordinance one oh five two thousand. Those are the ones that we absolutely have. Would you ask?
Yeah. You're trying to.
From the mic, from the mic.
If you guys, if you want to discuss, discuss outside or?
Well, you're saying you're repealing one oh four or whatever, but it's already repealed.
You're in a worship. You can't hear.
I couldn't hear him.
Sir, can we listen to him?
Yes. Okay. So indeed, you're correct, it's been repealed. Those other ordinances, seventy-one oh four and one oh five were repealed first with one oh seven oh nine, which itself was repealed and replaced with ordinance five dash ten. The certifications that we have in the state office to authorize tax abatements in the city of North Canton, that I've verified with possession of the documents with, verifying with that office, with director of the office, our ordinances, seventy-one oh four and one oh five two thousand. So this ordinance is intended to put in place and put notice to all of our residents, the authority that the city of North Canton has through the state to provide the tax abatements. And so this ordinance repeals ordinance five dash ten. Because it repealed itself, ordinance one oh seven dash nine, you must repeal one oh seven dash nine as well, otherwise there's implication that it is revived. The city then, under the authority of a new ordinance, may revive ordinance seventy-one oh four and one oh five to put those back in place and separate those. And that's why it states that right now with the ordinance for five dash ten, that it's one single CRA. And one oh seven oh nine did the same thing, but we had two separate for Valley View and the Main Street corridor. This puts those back in place, puts the current ordinance in the city of North Canton in line with what the state permits it to give as tax abatements. And so there's not a new expanded area. This is actually brought back to what you had for the Main Street corridor in year two thousand and for the Valley View separately. The map wasn't included, I've not received that yet, of course, that's going to be provided before this is going to be approved. There's nothing in there that hides the ball because if you wish to see those, you could look at what's been provided on oh four oh five. I've asked for a new map so that those could be shown on a single map and say in one color, this is Valley View, this is the Main Street corridor. And so anyone that wishes to apply for this tax abatement, that these have been, as you said, these have been available from a few years, nineteen ninety-nine, and businesses and individuals have taken advantage of those. And for those of you that are stating that because someone told you that you believe that these ordinances do not permit new construction for residential properties, I urge you to not just go from what someone tells you, to read them. And you'll see numerous times, every one of these ordinances, they state the purpose of the entire CRA and state several times that there is authority to permit new construction for residential properties.
Tim, let me ask you a few questions here as we prepare.
Yes.
Because I think obviously this is a very technical issue and I know a lot of people are confused about it. There's been a lot of absence and clarity or two. So we're in a position where, as we talked about, I think amongst each of us, what you're saying is effectively the state has a map that we thought was in effect for two thousand, for the two thousand and ten.
Yes.
And in fact, the actual map is smaller. And so what we're doing now is effectively reducing that map because of the state, the state's statutory base, right? Fully agree with that, yes, sir.
Right.
And we're bringing back in the old rules, but some of us think that the old rules are, in a way that, that you talked about it, are probably too permissible. For example, I would be in favor of reducing a hundred percent to fifty percent. I think a lot of us would be too. So that we're not giving all a hundred percent of faith, then we're reducing it by half if we're going to do that. I would show you in favor of taking the amount, if you're going to improve your house, you don't have to prove fifty thousand dollars. Maybe you have to only prove twenty-five hundred dollars so that we're encouraging more people in the community to do more, more building. And I think many of us have said that we would be absolutely one hundred percent in favor of making sure that every abatement ever comes before the council or every sort of this. So here's my question, and I hope that was a little bit clear with everybody that's there. Here's my question. This doesn't reflect that. It reflects a little bit of that, but it doesn't reflect what I think we vote is the future piece of the CRA.
Right.
If we make amendments to this particular ordinance, would that affect your, we need to do an application?
You do need to do a new application.
All right. So I want that to be abundantly clear to the people here tonight. We have to pass this in order to reflect the way that the state has it. So we're not expanding CRA, we're going back to the two thousand four one, which is really no change to the two thousand and ten. Two thousand and four, am I right?
Yes, the, well, the one is for two thousand and four in that's Valley View and you have Main Street that's in two thousand.
In two thousand, all right.
Those are what is in place and authorized by the state right now.
Right, no changes. Right. So this is, I want to be very clear about this because I think we anticipate, at least I envision, and everybody else is looking, we've introduced this as a two-step process. We'll take the two thousand and the two thousand and four, which are the ones that are in place today. No changes, no adjustments. We passed this legislation that says the, the missteps that took place in two thousand Right, so this is, I want to be very clear about this, because I think we anticipate, at least I envision it, and everybody else is looking, we've introduced this as a two-step process. We'll take the two thousand and the two thousand four, which are the ones that are in place today, no changes, no adjustments. We passed this legislation that says the missteps that took place in two thousand nine and ten with the legislation are wiped away. Those things go away, and we're going to correct those. So the second step is then to make changes, to make the updates that we talked about, and then some other ones, to reduce from a hundred percent to fifty percent, to change the terms that are there, and potentially also work with folks like Chamber, or other pieces and parts that they might want to put into. So does that make sense, everybody?
Sure.
Does that make sense, everybody out there?
Yep.
No?
Okay, hold on, hold on. I can see that there is confusion out here.
Yes.
And these are the folks that have circulated the petition, and I think may not have given, have been fully informed when garnering those signatures from the petition. So I think it's important that these folks right here need to be a hundred percent clear and on board with what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
Right, right.
But I can see right now that the mayor's shaking their head, don't.
No, we'll make sure that before I leave tonight, that we're on the same page.
We'll do it after the meeting, stick around, or this week, whenever, but we'll sit down and we'll hash it out. You guys need to understand what we're trying to do here, because I don't want any more misinformation being put out in the community and garnering signatures on petition as well. I mean, I don't, I think people have been misled, I don't want that to happen.
We're not, we're not to be offended, and more importantly, we need to make changes in the future, as the mayor talked about, so that there aren't future issues relative to commercial or residential without us.
Absolutely.
And everybody else having input in those decisions.
I think when we talked at the last meeting, I think somebody tonight thought that we brought back, saying it's not at all what we brought back.
Not at all. That's what we're trying to avoid.
And I'm upset that he left, because he actually does listen, and he wants to hear the truth, and I think it's so important that this is a matter of business.
All right, we'll clarify that tonight, I think we begin to understand where we're going. I hope you understand the spirit of where we're coming from, I think, as a municipal.
Just ahead of that, Eddie Shaw tried to hold the line, was really against some of the original language in this, starts the years and so forth. So what we're saying is, if we pass this, which I don't, I don't think we should do on emergency, I think we should have a review. Then we're going to come back and readjust the CRA overall, the entire city, or whatever you want to do with it.
You're permitted to amend.
Amend.
The current CRA, you can say the areas, the zones that you already have.
That we already have.
That we'd like to amend that with different conditions, different years, different amounts.
Different.
And if you should have, say, no, not authorize new construction, you must state that.
State your good time to take that.
And let me tell you that it's not just looking at the ordinance. I went back to the meeting minutes, I've read all of the meeting minutes and the committee meeting minutes, and if you're going to withhold a significant portion of the state statute that we put in the CRAs, or you're going to say, we're not going to permit new construction, CRAs for residential property, would you expect that that would be mentioned at least once in one of those meetings?
Uh-huh.
But it wasn't mentioned a single time, and the legislation actually declares that it's available. So that's why it's, I'm kind of frustrated for you in that I think that you may have inadvertently been, I'm not going to say you misled, but I think there was a mistake, unfortunately, you put a lot of effort into bringing out your concern. And I welcome you to come and ask me questions. I have no, no inhibitions to answer questions. If you come and ask and say, hey, you heard this allegation, what do you think? Can you show me? Absolutely, I'll sit down and show you what I think based on the legislation. But I think absolutely council understands the concerns, but also understand that tax abatements that have been awarded under valid legislation that has certifications from the state entitled, and those property owners that have received those tax abatements are entitled to keep them. We have no authority outside unless those individuals do not continue to maintain the property. There's no authority to come back and say, we told you get a tax abatement if you invested this money in your own property or into your business, we've now changed our minds, and we're going to take that away. The Supreme Court looks at that as what's called an ipso facto law, which means you can't take something that today is permitted by your law and say, we said it was good on this date, but no longer, and we think that there are outside compliance with the laws, we're going to take this away. For certainly those that have made this investment with the belief that they will receive these, that's where the court says it's unfair now to come back and say, we changed your mind. They've already expended the resources on this, you're not permitted to go back and say, we're going to take away, although we promised you for this ten, twelve, or fifteen years. You're entitled to that, it's a reach of a contract for us to now come back and say, we're going to change the terms, I'm sorry that you're going to be harmed by this. We still have to honor those, but from moving forward, we absolutely have the ability to, if you want to keep those areas, to go ahead and amend the CRA with a new ordinance. And you can have discussions and debates about the amounts, whether new constructions are permitted, all those are permissible, but for what we have in place, what we want this ordinance to do is to say, right now with what we know we have the right to give tax abatements, our residents should know and not be misled, that's one area that's in this type of map. We have the authority to do the Main Street Corridor under the oh four, or the two thousand ordinance, and Valley View in two thousand four, and nothing beyond that. And residents should be aware of that, that's why I think this ordinance should be enacted.
Well, and I can refer to the discussion points tonight, I just want to make sure too, as a housing council member, I was told my role was just to make sure that property gains within compliance. A housing officer makes decisions with the grants, that's something we may revisit. Our role there as council members over there is to make sure other council members there, or planning commissioner members or citizens, was just to make sure that whoever got those grants were, ran those abatements were compliant, keeping up the product. We had no input, nor did we know, when those other decisions were made, it was worth putting in the grant, as far as individual law applications. So that's something I think we should address, I think we should also look at section ten, where we, council reserves the rights, we evaluate the designation of these, and maybe our housing officer rejects any of the applications or court exemptions. You know, I want to know what that clearly means, how that is defined in the council, the mayor administration, because it isn't an administrative person that is going over this stuff, as a housing officer going over this program. So that's very crucial that we're all on the same page. But there's, I think there's two discussion points, we're going to revisit them all, but it should be just for revelations or redaps, I'm not for new construction in the future. You guys know we're going to be on this, and we can have further discussion, but I think what we're all saying, we're going to clean this up and revisit a new CRA for everybody, so we have additional input.
So in effect, you could have two pieces of legislation, one which is the one for us, which kind of corrects the former one of the past.
Right.
And the new one that puts in place the new adjustments.
Right.
We can't do that in the same piece of legislation, so we do it. So I think, I mean, again, I would be more comfortable if we did those at the same time. And again, having posted, I think it's enough notice to any of the other, that hey, there's an issue, a problem, so I don't think we're, I don't think we have an issue here. So I think if we work the two together at the same time, quickly, we can get a good resolution, one that I think will speak to exactly what people would be looking for.
But I think it's important, too, and I want to thank Tim for his efforts in this, I mean, he put a lot of time, and I agree, he's exhausted, researched this, he's mounted with a clarifier, the Kempis on the weeds, and that he's found a place to process questions that need to be addressed.
He's certainly.
Yeah, I agree, so thank you, Tim, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. One last thing, just because the councilman would prefer to headbutt this up. We've had someone else complain that the housing officer without counsel review, approved residential CRA applications. Just Rod Osborne made that allegation again this evening, and talked about in darkness and back rooms and so forth. But I want to be crystal clear on this, that the state statute states that only the housing officer, only your designated housing officer has the authority to approve residential tax abatement applications under the CRA. They have no authority and may not go to council, council has no authority, the mayor has no authority, the law director has no authority to override the housing officer. And so those allegations, I think, are certainly unwarranted, they haven't been fully vetted out, it's, that part is very clear. So what goes to annually, what goes to the housing council is, there's also an additional requirement to those that receive the abatements, that they continue to properly maintain the property. And if they don't do that, the housing officer performs the inspection, that's what goes to housing council. And if the housing council believes that the property is not being maintained, it, as the sole department or sole body, has the authority to override the housing officer's decision, that decision may be appealed to the common defense court. But understand, neither council, mayor, or law director has any authority to step in and say, you may not afford this tax abatement for residential property. And I believe the reason the Supreme Court and our state legislature, why it's in there, and the Supreme Court has interpreted it this way, is if you permitted the council to step in and review every residential tax abatement, there may be feelings of animosity if someone's abatement wasn't approved, and they stated, that's because I don't get along with this council member or whatnot, but it's absolutely clear that sole authority for approving that rests with the housing officer. And the Supreme Court has even said, this is where we should go forward for your housing officer. Identify whether or not the property in the application is within a properly certified CRA. Once you've done that, verify that the funds that have been used either for rehabilitation or new construction have been expended. The court says, once that's done, the housing officer has no more authority on that than to authorize and send to your county auditor, who has no authority to deny it. How should, your county auditor cannot look at that and say, I don't think North Canton should have approved that. It's called a ministerial duty, but the county auditor performs, the auditor is required then to post that abatement. So that's quite a bit, I think, I've provided from the research and analysis thus far. Now, I hope you understand the reason why I think this ordinance needs to be enacted, because that is the authority that this city has to authorize tax abatements. It's only under the ones we have the certificates, and that's oh four in two thousand. The one for two thousand and ten, without a certificate, it's invalid, it's just as if we apply, they send back a denial. Without the certification, you can't be authorized, all I know, you're just going to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. So I think moving forward here, and Dave will pretty much spell it out, we're going to have to be very deliberate with this, but get everybody on board. I mean, I still saw some heads out here shaking, I think they're still concerned that they're convinced that he's wrong and they're right. But we need to get on the same, on the same page. And I'll address the elephant broom, I know most of the group can't stand him, hate his guts, hate his guts.
He's good at his job, however.
Let's get the, let's work together, let's get the answers. If you want to grill them on a legal, on a legal standpoint, grill them, and put them through the paces, make them answer the questions, he will, he'll do it, he enjoys it. And this, we've done the research, so. And let's find some common ground, it's better than coming up here every Monday night in public speech and taking their jobs. There you go. That's one of the prime offers. Okay. Up next, ordinance rules claims, chairwoman.
I'm going to let you talk a little bit about this, we talked about a path for gas aggregation, so maybe you can ask wherever we are.
All right, this is the gas aggregation, and it's coming up at that time again. I reviewed the last ordinance that we passed, which was seventy four days twelve. There were two parts in that, one was continuing with independent energy as our consultant, second was not extending any longer than four years to any, any agreement that we made. The way it was worded, there was a little confusion on whether it said what it said, and I want to make sure the council, was it agreement that, you know, we could go with independent energy consultant, that's who's been doing it. We do have a master agreement signed way before my time on that, that we renew each year, we renew it automatically unless they give us sixty days' notice, so that's why I brought it up. Gas aggregation is not the issue, that was passed by the voters, they'd want a gas aggregation program, I just want to make sure the language is clear.
And then this is for the opt-out program, we've changed that.
We have not changed any of that, we've reevaluated, contacted, we didn't get a chance to review it.
We can't review, because that's the prices what weigh down.
The price of.
So this, how much is it? Two bucks?
It's in the two dollar range.
I didn't know, like, wouldn't that option do that, or you just had to opt out, is that the way it goes?
No, the way it is, is right now, we're getting ready to go out and solicit bids, which we have to, we have a certain open window, we'll get the bids, and then we'll decide which is the best bid, and that's predicated on what that time is, how long we're going to do the contract, and then at that point, if the resident wants to opt out because they think they have a better price, or maybe they want to opt out for less time, and then a gamble that they're, you know, they're going to hold it, but we're in that little window, so it depends on where your window is, and what people bid on, on those prices, and that's the window that we're in right now.
So we'll go the prices where you said, and right, whatever the bid price is.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I have the authority to move on that, so that our gas aggregation, I don't get interfered with, and the way I run it, I think we can, I can do that with the independent energy consultant under that seventy four twelve, but I wasn't sure if that language was clear enough for everybody, and I didn't want a problem later on down the road, so. And then we put it out for bid, and whoever gets it to us is a better price, obviously we could also look at customer service and that type of thing, and delivery and that, so.
Okay. So you're going to put it on the agenda, and then you want it to be in emergency?
Yes, because I'm approaching that window pretty quick to get those bids in, I don't want an interruption in our aggregation program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, good. Any more?
Tim, I know you talked about this, you did a lot of research, and you know, keeping us all up to date with some of the, and your offices that are here, and what are on that special, yeah, but you not, and we get.
Right, so this is House Bill five two three, and this is the follow-up for. Right. So this is House Bill 523. And this is the follow-up for... We went to the polls and there was an opportunity to decide whether or not the state of Ohio would permit recreational and medicinal use of marijuana. And that was defeated. What came shortly thereafter was a push to try to take off recreational portion and authorize the use of medicinal marijuana. And my understanding is the state legislature were concerned that if it didn't become involved and take a close look at this, that it may be enacted without safeguards that we wish to have in place. So our state legislature did through House Bill 523, which was signed by the governor on June 8. And the bill becomes law ninety days after it's signed by the governor. So this is just about the first week of September that medicinal marijuana, that legislation becomes law. And I guess one would think that there would be a lot of information then available to municipalities about how this is going to work, when those that wish to apply for these licenses and so forth, how all this is going to be put together. And we're only weeks away from when this becomes law. And this information really hasn't been made available. And so municipalities such as, we can't, are looking at until more information has been distributed and we understand how exactly this is going to be implemented in our state. This places a moratorium on the city granting any type of permit, certificates, or what have you for building structure, any kind of changes for cultivation, processing, or retail sale of medical marijuana. And the moratorium just means that we're not going to permit any new legislation simply during this period of time. Use the time to study once more information is made available about how this is going to be licensed, authorized, and so forth. And I think what it does for those that may be contemplating of placing either this cultivation, processing, or retail sale in the city of North Canton, it puts them on notice that we're simply looking at it and we're not ready to enact an ordinance that's quite yet to permit this, to limit it, or to ban it. But I believe by putting this in place, it helps those that may invest in perhaps these types of endeavors and then later find that North Canton, under the authority of this act, either limits, forbears these activities, which the state statute permits municipalities to do. So during this six months, this just lets others know, probably not in your best interest to go ahead and invest. That's still being looked at. We'll look at certainly what other areas are doing. But understand that the act does permit employers to continue drug-free programs that they have. It permits, as I said, municipalities and townships to enact legislation to regulate, limit, or even ban it. But the moratorium just simply means we'd like to have more information on how this could impact, which I imagine will have a tremendous impact on the community for those that don't claim for it. So this gives you an opportunity of sending out the notice. We're going to take a look at it, but perhaps this may not be the best place to invest once the moratorium is lifted. You can look at enacting legislation, how you wish to regulate it. If you don't, I imagine it will be regulated for you by the absence of any laws from the. So this is just an opportunity to look at it. And in the end, in the six months, that doesn't mean you can't do that again.
So you can just want to put this on the agenda for next time?
Yeah.
Next up, personal safety. We have a legislative request to amend Section 20 compensation as pertains to the director of permits. You heard the mayor earlier talk about he's got a gentleman in mind, Mr. Frye.
Yes, Gary Frye.
Yeah, Gary Frye. And that this was one of the positions that was included in that increasing salary range. But they've asked to increase it more to reflect assuming job duties.
Well, we had the key positions in the city, the finance department, the city administrator, the law director, and the engineer were in a salary range between seventy-five and 115. And so we would also ask the council to put a position of development director, which is Eric Foles' previous position, in that position. The responsibilities were restructuring and we're reviewing that department. And Councilman Dan Rickett is going to help us review the permits department to see if we're doing it in a cost-effective manner, the most cost-efficient and cost-effective manner. And also, we have our administrative Mike Ryan and Laura Brown looking at the financing of that. So we hope to have that. In any event, we're looking to restructure that department. The position has a lot of responsibility. And in order against somebody with Gary's experience and his background and knowledge, we're going to have to pay more to that position. And so that's why I'm asking council to approve that position. They're going to the higher salary range. And if, you know, for the record, I intend to pay him, it would be council's decision to put him in that salary, put that position in the salary. I intend to pay him the same salary that Chip Vanekis is making, which would be eighty-three and three, I believe that is.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, three. And but I would ask whoever to do that, we'd have to have councils.
And it's important to note that we actually have two positions that deal with permits. One of them currently, we will.
That's correct. And we don't have any contention of filling that position right now. So we do have two positions open. But Mike Ryan and I are confident that with Gary Frye's experience, that he'll be able to keep that department rolling. And we'll have to pay him more because of his experience to take that position. But it's hopefully going to save us a full chief building official position.
How about the vacation day? Are we going to widen that, Jeff? What's the, you know, the range for allowance? Is that a part of this or is that one separate?
No, we've already done that.
For that position?
Was that included?
Yes.
That position was included.
So normally, the administrator, they're appointing authority. The appointing authority obviously would be either the city council or the area position. And so, for example, we hired the law director, the department authority, to the council president, Gary will sign the initial vacation plan for the employees that are continuing. And then that's been a really, really positive move because that can assure you that if we did not give the competitive vacation package, we would not have our broad change financier, Laura Brown. And we also, Gary Frye, it would be very, very tough to get, you know, following the good Dutch. So.
In some of the history, you know, we had Eric as economic, and then we moved him into this same position with more responsibility. And we never did raise his pay. I think we had one, two percent pay in the whole time. So.
And since he was really doing two jobs, he was serving as, because when we first hired Eric, he was the economic development director, and we had a building and permits superintendent.
I want that.
Yes.
I think we're on the agreement.
Okay. And I would ask if this be passed on emergency, if possible, because, you know, we're being hard right with what we want to do.
Couple of points. The compensation section, that's the high end. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean everyone's in the opinion.
Right.
That's still a rate. My only concern is that I want good personnel here. And I think Eric was in the opinion. I hope Mr. Frye can do both positions because I've been adamant of breaking that position and concentrate on more housing issues. As you know, the surveys respond to that survey of people. I think the very least, if you're going to continue to do this, you feel comfortable giving him the new both positions. And I'm not saying he's not here. I'm not, I'm not discrediting of his abilities. But I'm going to, you know, defer to your position you're making here for him to be hired for the time. We have to hire another nuisance inspector. We've talked about it. I'd like to see this happen now. You know, we talked about year to year, and we stood, and we look to do that because when Mr. Johnson goes on vacation, it was Mr. Paul went out and fulfilled his job duties. We cannot have this person do that. We're better to have more people staff to look at these housing issues, as expected. So can we start that process now? Can we start looking? Then I will read this.
And here's, we can answer that question. One of the things since Eric has left, and when we already was going to be leaving, we had, that's when we really started the review. One of the areas that we feel that we can improve the efficiency down there is that Eric did serve as the zoning administrator, but he also went and did the inspections himself, which is an admirable thing that he's doing, but it was not the most cost-efficient way to do that. So what Mike Ryan is going to do is we can have a building inspector or a part-time building inspector do the inspections. So really, when somebody comes in and they say, "We're going to put a pool in our backyard," the zoning administrator, which in this case, it was Eric Foles, and now it will be Gary Frye, has to sign off on that. But now, Gary Frye will take that request and that plan and pass it off to a building inspector. Because it's a more cost-efficient way to have a building inspector do that. And then that is where it's going to be able to free up Gary Frye to do other work because he's not doing those inspections. And I think Mike, after reviewing that department and talking with Eric, at least like seventy percent of Eric's workload was occupied with zoning inspections.
Right. That's what we're hiring somebody else.
I would like to talk with Gary about that and also the whole entire process to make that a little smoother. We are hiring the permits clerk out front. She'll start next week. One of her duties that I learned from someone else is to make sure she gets certified as a permit clerk so she knows those things. She also can do some things at the front desk and take care of some things so that it doesn't occupy someone else's time that we better serve. So but we need that extra due sponsor. That's not our thing.
I appreciate it. We talked.
But we did say here after the year.
We know. We didn't interrupt. I'm like, we have to hold the line. Our list is going to happen. I don't know.
Well, no, no, no. It makes perfect sense because we're in support of that too. And one of the things we have to look at is the process because, you know, we want to make sure that we streamline in the best way that we can. And it's also a very delicate situation because, you know, we have to make sure that we're going about nuisance complaints properly. It's a very, very sensitive issue. We don't want to vilify somebody. Oftentimes, it's just communication.
With the right person.
We have to finesse it a little bit. Again, just like slam and say, like, "Your window closed." We talked about that, Tim. We need to make sure we finesse it. And we're, there are taxpaying residents. We want to show them respect. And that would make them have an issue. And then, you know, then if we give some warnings and they apply, then we put some T-shirts.
Soften first, and then Gary picks it.
Right, absolutely. And so sometimes I give it as a communication thing.
And I think that most of the, just so that you know, the process, where we have a nuisance complaint, we do have Mr. Johnson, who's one of our part-time police officers. He goes out there and inspects it. He's a police officer. He's flashing light. He has this violation, writes him a letter. And then all of those are passed on to our law director, Tim Fox. A good thing is, is Tim, his goal is compliance. Ultimately, what we want is we don't want to punish people. We just want the compliance on them. And so, Tim, I think that what over ninety percent of those complaints, you've not had to, or more, you've not had to take them to court or the magistrate. You just get them to comply. Correct?
Correct.
So it does take a lot of time.
And I appreciate your offering your evidence, especially with 9240. I appreciate Mr. Johnson going out and helping with the meetings of the residents. We could have inspector, business sector every Monday, every Friday in 9240. About the trash can sits up as we can. And continual high grass. So, you know, it's frustrating. I've talked about it fifty times here. So let's, I appreciate you guys.
If I can make a little clearer, I will hire Mr. Johnson.
All right. Next up, we have the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Canton, Clermont, Service and Clermont. Tim, you want to?
Yes, Judge. This is our broad, the common term for the search street department, collective bargaining agreement with them. It's in line with the same terms and conditions that we have negotiated with the Inspire, UMS, our finance department. It's just taken quite a bit longer because they negotiated a little bit differently. They were wanting to meet more frequently and they were quite willing to wait, believing that time would resolve issues. And in some cases, it did. In some, not as much. But again, this is in line with all of the others put in place. This is, as with the other unions, is a two percent raise for each year and a $500 signing bonus. The difference between this is with the other unions, the process took three or four months. This has been a little over two years in negotiating this. And so we're really happy that they informed us that they believe, well, they stated that they took their vote and that they have numbers. So this just puts it before council, the authority of the mayor to go ahead and enter into this collective bargaining agreement with the street department. The one that's still outstanding is somewhat of a co-union, if you will. It's still under AMLCIO, but it's our water treatment. And they've asked to meet again. So that one's going to be a little bit longer, but we anticipate that it will be resolved in the near future.
I understand. I'm going to get that on the agenda on our urgency as well. And I got to, I have to sound like a record, but I got to thank you again for all your hard work. It wasn't too long ago, pre your predecessor, Mayor Pryor, you, we spent $60,000 on here negotiating these catchbacks.
Thanks.
Tim, you're a good guy.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Next up, screen out and fonte. Make it quick.
Okay, so I want to stretch this out for another half hour. But we've got A, B, and C. Can you all go along like that?
Yes.
You can go. Take your time.
Okay, so, hey, this is just basically on the sanctuary side where we're just tidying up some paperwork. We have a perpetual super drainage system there at the sanctuary. And this is the clerical emergency. So I'd like to get that.
clarity of emergency, so I'd like to get that on the agenda. The B and C are pretty similar in the sense that we're forty-three is expanding the Odum project, where we just gotta move the pipes around a little bit, lower the water lines support, then we're looking for a perpetual water maintenance, and that's really, you know, for that project. So I, and that's, and that's backside, that's nearly religion in Kings Creek, and Kings Creek is that back, too.
Correct.
And we want to have those also as emergencies.
Do you have a seat?
I don't see.
Yeah, the top, page three, top page three.
All right, I'm not sure what that one has, I'm sorry.
Do you have a W C West Maple?
Yeah, what, is that the Y V project for like an eighteen? Is that the one?
That's the one right out here on West Maple.
It's the intersection.
Yeah, I'm sure. Putting the third lane.
Oh, oh, from Rain, uh, Rain, I thought that was until eighteen.
It won't be until eighteen, but we have to apply for the grant this September. It's on here, released in July. That way we can, we can ask for the project.
So, yeah, so we're gonna start the streets later, hopefully, right?
No, that might even start until eighteen, but we have to apply for the grant. We have federal grants.
Okay.
This is for the W C Green.
Okay, gotcha. And this is the, an emergency as well?
Correct, we need to apply by July, or September sixteen, so hopefully we'll meet.
Okay, very good. So this is a grant, so.
Why, sir, rubbish. Chair, sir.
Okay, this is a ordinance to authorize Mike Ryans, if the administration can get a decent bid for the Fair Park Water Replacement Project. Anything more than that, Mike? It's just giving bids, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Same as the emergency, because.
We need to bid the project out, so we could.
Through a day, not just through. To, to people a day, to get a day done?
Correct.
Okay. So, anybody have any questions about that? We'll move on then?
Yeah. I answered probably.
Yeah, so we've got, we are, I want to do, you got, need to do the bids for the UMS building. Obviously, there's been some debate and discussion about this, the needs of material like that that's due, relative to the project. I wonder if we might take some time during next council meeting to do the presentation on what exactly is going to be done, or.
He was only prepared to do that.
That's, that's, you know.
Yeah.
It'd make sense for us to go out there.
I agree. I agree, yes.
So he took me through it, and I think everybody should see the whole situation.
Yeah, I wonder if it should be done, like for six thirty?
Just go out there, like maybe, just maybe.
Seven separate.
Something like maybe six fifteen, that would be okay. Take a little tour, and then that way, you know, by the time you drive to your area and drive back, make a tour as well. Because one of the challenging things is that, see, you don't really realize this, and so you talk to the fire, fire mechanics over there, and our A and Ts, is that they have a very, very stressful one job. So they're dealing upwards to, you know, seven calls in, you know, one, one day. And, you know, there are really, you know, life-threatening emergencies in some cases. And so the problem is that when you go over there, you know, they're, they're there for twenty-four hours. So in some cases, they don't even have a place really to put their food. Like the areas that they're able to relax in, which in some cases, it could be just for a half hour or an hour in between calls, when they're on call twenty-four hours, they've gotta have some way, so some creature comforts there, so that they're not sitting in an uncomfortable chair or an uncomfortable setting. And then also the fact that we do, we do have both men and women that work over there, and they have to be able to have their sort of facilities, you know, and they're sleeping with me now, you know, for about this. So if you go over there, I think councilman Sredzak has already been over there, taking us a tour of it, and we can have everybody else go over there, and Chief can explain it. I think it'll be real clear to everybody that this is a project that will definitely be involved.
The next meeting is just a cooperative emergency program, it allows us to participate with other municipalities, and this is just our green lights and the distribution to participate, it isn't actually the purchase of a ticket.
One more in addition, if you don't have a block for purchasing, this is an actual one.
So don't be outside for us, David. Mike, thanks for finding that we're here for another way to save us money.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting. Before, I ask for a motion of second to adjourn, some housekeeping. Next Monday, maybe the fifth Monday, we will not be meeting. Weekend, the week following week is Labor Day week. We will not be meeting on that. During that week, our next legislative meeting will be on the twelve.
I thought we'd be in that Tuesday.
No, we're not gonna have enough. We've got all this emergency legislation, we're not gonna have a meeting.
So the nine, twelve, and seven, or we go to the fire station, or maybe in that place?
On the twelve.
Yeah, before the twelve, if you, if you want the light, we could give you a quick tour, Mike, a grand arrangement for a tour, if you need the, you know, UMS department, you know, six fifteen or six seventeen.
Well, you set up, you know, aside.
Yeah, we can do that, but we'll be September twelfth, seven p.m. That's up right now, that's executive session, so stop. Give him a lot of those orders.
I need to have my, the Friday, Friday, fifteen.
Okay, so it gives you time, you'll have to let us register.
Yeah.
You've got hundreds.
Sixteen, right, that's under sixteen.
Okay. Okay, all right, and that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion of second adjourned? Those take that, I have the same sign.
All right, that's the lobby.
All right, how you doing, Derek?
She was answering better to you. Can I do it one time? Basically, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So, what were this department procedure?
What concerns?
I have a job, sorry. I have a dream, man. I have a dream.
What'd you say?
It was changed to.
Yeah.
Sixteen. It's changed to add.
Certainly, it's why it was an issue.
The entire legislation.
So here's the next change. You're doing a slight hand, you are changing, you're adding.
When you have a CRA, it raises the CRA for something, it's necessary.
When the housing officer enters into a contract, the housing officer.
You're gonna leave.
Okay.
So that's there.
You want me to treat that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
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 So, yeah.